So, good evening, everyone. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 1046 PL 1975 C231 S1 amended 2006 C70 S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press and the new poster on December 3, 2020, by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on December 3, 2020. Our mission statement: The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving local society. Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Okay, we're gonna take roll call. Please unmute your mics, pause for a second, so we can hear you clearly, and then put yourself back on mute. Is that TM?
Yeah.
Mr. Grillo?
Yep.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Mr. Pinkney? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Breach? Ms. Alvez Anderson?
Here. And I'm a flag symbol.
Our flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with the report of committee chairs. Madam, building's in the chair, would you like to start with buildings and ground?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
We had our meeting present was Ms. Brown, Mr. Hues, myself, President Anderson, Mr. Lotaraca, and Mr. Grillo. We had no facilities use requests. We talked about the third Good Marshall renovation, and that the insurance carrier has approved the quotes, and the repairs are to the sum of demo for $152,000 and $241,000 for restoration rebuild. We talked about the middle school elevator, replacing it for $225,000. We talked about central office relocation and Barack Obama Elementary. We're still talking about a modular office that could be placed outside the high school or on Obama's property. We talked about the long-range facilities plan, which is kind of a mixed bag. Everything is in there that we can possibly think of doing because otherwise you would have to pull it back and get all these approvals. So although there are plans in there, those are, some of them are like a wishless type of thing that goes on there. And then the committee will conduct a walkthrough at both the maintenance building and the IT building sometime this month, depending on Mr. Lotaraca's ability.
That concludes your, that concludes my report. Any questions?
Ms. Lizinski?
I had a question about the changes of the long-range facility plans. What changes did you make?
I don't think we made any changes.
Well, we have a presentation that's gonna follow in about five to 10 minutes that'll detail the updated long-range facility plan. So every five years, we're required to do a major update to the plan. So that's a reexamination of the direction the district is heading in terms of our programs and our properties and how we're utilizing our space. We also did a demographic update as well. So our architects, SSP Architectural, and Ms. Peritonee, and Ms. Tochko is with us to do the presentation probably in the next 10 minutes or so.
I had one other question.
Yes.
I was, I was thinking about, you know, how we're supposed to consolidate and move the administrative building somewhere in our district. And because this district didn't benefit from the new construction that other abbots benefited around us, Neptune and Long Branch and others, I was wondering if there was a thought about approaching the School Construction Corp., or what do they call it now, to try to help us fund some upgrades so we can accommodate the legislative services audit and our own consolidation efforts to reduce costs?
Right, so the SD, it's now the SDA, School Development Authority. They will be part of the process moving forward with any plans we have for central offices. They have to approve all our projects. However, they will not fund administrative space. So that's where there's a problem with them. They also don't have any funding right now available for additional projects, but we are in touch with them. We were in touch with them probably within the last six months to talk about the district needs. This is where we also talked about the boilers at Barack and some of the issues at the high school in terms of the restroom facilities and expressed our concerns about them putting aside money for smaller projects, much like, for example, the middle school elevator that Ms. TM talked about, so that it's not always just the SDA with, you know, building a new school from the ground up. So we are looking at that, and we do have a presentation right after the architect to talk about our goal number four, which is the repurposing of Barack, which also includes a discussion about central office.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry, I don't need to make this conversation. Any conversation in photographs about maybe bonding some of this, so it's a payback number of years because of the situation with the S2?
Yes.
Yeah, so a little preview, I guess, of the presentation. We have talked with bond counsel and our financing partners, Robbie Akampora at Phoenix Advisors, about the opportunities that are available to finance over time, so we don't have to front the cost all in one budget year. We are looking at a five-year either capital lease or ground lease, sort of using those terms interchangeably to space it out over time. And, you know, right now, we're paying about $250,000, $249,000 a year here at Central Office. We would pay off over the course of five years, probably a $2.5 million improvement to Barack or to a new modular building.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I asked questions that are already gonna be answered.
That's all right. My presentation will be shorter now.
Jeff, you're gonna speak about this during the presentation probably, but is there any difference between capital and ground lease? I thought there was a difference between the two.
I don't know if our attorney wants to talk about that at all, but my understanding is a capital lease is a little more oriented towards equipment, and a ground lease actually is more like somebody's home mortgage where it's actually tied to the property itself in terms of the lien or collateral for the loan.
I couldn't explain it better, Jeff.
Are there any questions, any other questions regarding buildings and ground? Okay, thank you. Chairman, Mr. Lotaraca, finance, please.
The deadline for the annual audit's been extended due to state issues. That's kind of a statewide issue there. The response, our response to the legislative audit, I hope everyone has got the spreadsheet that Jeff sent out, kind of matching up the points from the audit and what our response has been. So if there's any questions there. We also talked a little bit about central office relocation. I guess we'll get into that in the presentation. We're finalizing the district's purchase power agreement, and also we have some additional COVID relief funds. We're getting more Chromebooks. There is an issue because of, we've primarily been teaching remote, that our contract with SEDEXO managing the cafeterias has a guarantee of break even. So due to their reduced number of students and meals, we expect SEDEXO to ask to be released from that, from that guarantee. There's, simply hasn't been enough of a demand for meals with the students. And then the final point, Neptune zoning has approved that site where Holy Innocence Church and school is out on 33 for College Achieve Charter School. So that, that'll continue to be ongoing competition for students as we move ahead. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for, for Mr. Lotaraca, Barbara?
I want to ask if Mr. Hastings has maybe estimated what the transportation costs would be for students that are presently attending College Achieve that may opt to continue and go to Neptune?
No, I don't have an estimate of that number yet. Probably as we get closer to the, well, as we start to move forward with the budgeting, we'll certainly include a number in there to accommodate additional costs for transportation out there. But the issue, I suppose, will be the distance that that is from, from Asbury Park itself, and how many folks, how many parents decide to keep their students there, traveling out to, to the new site out off of 33 there, and how many decide to bring their students back to us here in district.
The other question I had is about food service, which you brought up, because I noticed on your, one of your documents today that there's a $20,000, I don't know if it's a debt or a payment. Is there some, some kind of general overview you can give us about the amount of money that, because we're not serving as many food, meals as we thought we would remotely during remote virtual, what kind of, I guess you would call debt or damage it's gonna do because we're not feeding them?
Sure, so you're referencing the treasurer's report, which shows approximately a $24,000 deficit in the cafeteria fund. That's mainly due to funds in transit. So the report there is as of October 31st. However, our September and October reimbursements for the cafeteria were received in November, and that was to the tune of about $45,000. So because those weren't received in the same time period as that end date on that report, it shows that deficit. In terms of the overall status of the cafeteria, SEDEXO gets paid a management fee based, basically on the number of meals served. So for each meal that's served, there's a portion that then gets collected by SEDEXO as a management fee. So as we've gone through COVID and the having students in, having students on A B schedules, having students remote, we've obviously served less meals than would have been planned during a normal school year. So on a normal school day, we would have served maybe 3,000 meals. With students being remote, that number has fluctuated quite a bit, you know, over the past couple of months, as we've had sort of the spring where we were in lockdown, then in the summer, and then the fact that during the summer, students weren't necessarily at school at all, and then now back to our regular September. So that number's ranged from, you know, as low as 300 a day up to maybe 1,500 a day. So SEDEXO has been monitoring those numbers and trimming staff back as appropriate, so we don't have as many employees on the payroll there as they might if we were in a regular, regular breakfast, lunch, snack situation. So we are working with them to make sure the costs are being maintained and being sort of capped with, in line with the number of meals that are being served. So, you know, it's an ongoing process, but in the contract that we sign with SEDEXO each year, there is a sort of statement of facts, if you will, not to steal one of Adam's terms, but there is a statement of facts that sort of assumes we'll serve X number of meals a day, and we guarantee so many days of service per year, and that's how they sort of come up with their estimate and their decisions on whether they're guarantee a profit in the cafeteria or a break even. Now that we've been through this situation for the past eight months or so, obviously it's, it's much different than, than what was stated in the contract, so I would expect them to send us a letter soon asking that they be released from the break even portion. So we'll start looking at those numbers, continue to look at the numbers, the meals served, and what the costs are associated with that, to see where we're gonna land with the cafeteria fund itself.
If I could just also step in, along those lines, Jeff, and as we saw kind of with transportation and some other vendors, during this state of emergency, or public health emergency, there was legislation that was passed that specifically requires school districts and other public entities to fulfill its contractual obligations as if COVID and closures didn't occur. So to the extent SEDEXO, or any other company, vendor for that matter, wants to engage in a negotiation, certainly it's in our best interest, as well as the vendors, to take them up on it and to try and resolve it through negotiations.
Jeff, do you expect a finding during the audit, just so we can anticipate it, or, you know, just so we can look out for it, so we know what's going on based on the atmosphere right now?
Perhaps technically, yes, we would get a finding, find, if we wind up with a deficit in the cafeteria fund, that's a finding. However, there is a small surplus within the cafeteria fund. So again, it's gonna wind up where the numbers turn out, and then the conversations that we have with the auditors as to whether or not, given the circumstances, they feel that that's gonna be significant enough to rise to the level of finding, or if it's more of just a note in the report itself with sort of an asterisk saying COVID.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, Ms. Lizinski, would you please, as Chair of Policies, report out?
Sure, we have some updated policies, most of them mandated, and some language changes. One thing you want to note is the security, school district security revised, that what they did is they added an annual audit. So now every year, security is going to be audited and it has to be submitted. The other thing is, I, well, I expected an appendix from the COVID plan that we submitted, but I didn't see it added to the agenda. Other than that, it's just language and some other things that are just updated and reflected in the new policy that we have approved tonight.
I'm on mute.
I also, I also, Madam President, I just want you to know that Ms. Breach is on her phone. She couldn't get on her computer, but she is listening, so I don't know if there's something you can do so she can.
Okay, thank you very much. Were there any questions for Ms. Lizinski? All right, then thank you. Ms. Breach, can you hear me? I guess not.
We may have to try and make her.
Yeah, so we'll try to get her. Eric, Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Hi. Are you, can you report out for us, ENI, for curriculum?
Uh, yeah, hold on one second.
Okay, thank you.
All right. The recommending, can you hear me?
You have to increase your, you have to increase your volume a little bit, Eric.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you sound good, Eric, go ahead.
Okay. I recommend for the development and submission of an application for the NJEA Sustainable Jersey for Schools Program Grant. So I recommend board approval to partner with Monmouth University in the expanding access to computer science education professional learning grant application. The purpose of the grant is to expand access and opportunities for educators to participate in high-quality professional learning experiences in computer science education, also establish a network of CS hubs at geographically diverse New Jersey-based IHEs to provide high-quality professional learning opportunities to K through 12 educators at all stages of their careers, and promote the expansion of CS education at partner school districts, and ensure all K through 12, K through 12 students have equitable access to high-quality educators. Let's see, Monmouth University is the lead agency in this grant, and a 17-month project period is April 1, 2021 through August 31, 2022. Recommend approval for the development and submission of NJDOE Early College Program Grant, also seeking approval to renew the high school counseling department's Ramp Coach in order to continue to process for a certifying AP High School as a recognized ASCA model program. It's Ramp. Recommend approval for the 2021, 2022 Asbury Park High School Course Guide. Recommend approval for the purchase of iPads, protective cases, and charges for all preschool students, maximum 325 and staff 153 members. Seeking approval for OIDA International to continue to work with the TLA after-school program. Recommend approval for Teen Step Up to continue to work with the TLA after-school program for school years 2021. Also seeking approval for Teen Step Up to continue to work with the TLA after-school program for school year 2020, 21. Recommend approval for the pilot of the Prime Science Grades K through 9 program to be implemented from January 2021 to June 2021. And there's also, also additional, I think there was something that was added, but I don't have access to that, email from the Malice. Edwin, I don't know if you have that last edition?
Yes, I do. We asked to recommend it for the board to approve the Language and Language Literacy Associates for Multilingual, Multicultural Education to come and examine and conduct an audit of the district's ESL bilingual programs for all grades between K and 12. We are, we are looking to make some major, some programmatic changes, given some of the changes that are going on in the district to kind of streamline our program in ESL and bilingual, total cost not to exceed $8,000, and it will be fully funded from Title III funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Edwin. That concludes the curriculum and instruction report.
Are there any questions from board members? For Chair, Mr. Pinkney? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pinkney. Ms. Lizinski, would you please report out on athletics?
We did not have a, this month, it's kind of quiet on the athletic front, so that they've just released some, JSIA just released some updated calendars on when school, on when the sports for the spring start, so we'll be discussing it next month, I'm sure.
Questions or comments?
Okay, thank you.
If that's what you want to go to next, is that the?
And now, public participation in the court is with Board Policy 0167.
So there's several ways for folks to participate. Initially, we can take a question in the comments section, or if you click on the raised hand function, you hover your mouse over your name in the participant section or the comment section, you can see the raised hand, so we can check you there. If you're on the phone and you hit star three, that'll put you into the queue. When you're recognized, we'll unmute you and you will hear a tone or a voice say that you're unmuted, and then you can make your comments. And again, the three-minute time limit on comments applies. So we'll give a minute just for folks to queue up, and then we'll see where we are. I'm sorry, and also, there is the public comments email address that's also advertised as well, publiccomment@asburypark.k12 nj.us. Mr. Brannigan, do you see any comments in our comments section?
At this time, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, we do have one email. I'll read that email out. This is from Mr. Al Miller. Good evening, board members and administration. I am Al Miller, President of the Monmouth County School Boards Association. County officers are trying to attend as many local meetings in this school year as possible. I first want to offer our congratulations to the new and returning board members. If you have any board members that will be leaving, we want to thank them for their dedicated service to your local district. We also want to thank all your staff, administration, and board members for all your hard work and dedication to your students and district during this pandemic. We are asking at your reorg meeting to please appoint a representative to the Monmouth County School Boards Association. Our 2021 county meeting is scheduled for February 11, 2021, a joint meeting with Ocean, based on superintendent de vows, March 2, 2021, eighth grade dialogue. We are working to do this virtually, more information to come. May 13, 2021, topics include legislative member visit, board member awards, and county officer elections. Positions will be president, vice president, vice president of legislation, board of directors delegate, and board of directors alternate. Call for officers will come out in the next few months. Please consider running for one of these positions. We want to wish you, your family, and staff a safe, happy, and healthy holiday season. We hope to see you all in 2021. Al Miller, President, Monmouth County School Boards Association. That is the only public comment we have via email. Again, Mr. Brannigan, anything else on our comments section?
At this time, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, good. And this will now close, public participation, and then we're going to move forward with a review of our regular meeting agenda items. Madam Superintendent?
Good evening, board members and the public. Are there any questions regarding items on B1? Any questions on items?
Give me a minute, give me a minute so I can scroll through my agenda real quick on my iPad.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any questions for items on B two?
I just wanted to ask about. I just wanted to ask about item five. Somebody's got feedback. Uh, are we going into exact on item five on B two?
No, we're not.
I was under the standing from uh, the personnel meeting that we were going to have a review from the attorney.
Right now, um, Ms. Lizinski, right now, the insurance carrier has assigned a risk assessment officer who's been out to the district. He's collecting information for New Jersey Schools Insurance Group. Uh, they have not assigned an attorney yet. Uh, they're making a determination as to uh, the facts of the case. Um, the risk assessment officer has come out and met with uh, some administrators to talk about the incident and um, we await.
If I can, I think that's probably end there in terms of what we're gonna be uh, putting out in public.
That was the end, yes.
Yeah, thanks.
I, I think it would be to the board's advantage to know what this is curtain so that we can anticipate um, a pleasure to it if we could go into exec on these uh, number five. Any litigation?
To get what? To get what information? There's nothing that we can do about it right now.
But the board has not been informed and it's being forwarded to insurance carrier. I think the board needs to be informed of the incident and what, what could be anticipated or what the status is.
I, I, I'm happy to discuss whatever you'd like to discuss. Uh, I think given the, the posture of every uh, there's going to be a discussion and it really shouldn't happen in um, in public.
People have been right. It could be. Adam, I also have the concern that there is a possibility we have issues here of people not being right.
Yeah, so to be clear, um, except we are going to talk about it. Um, it'd be a little bit of a dance, uh, and it probably would not be a complete discussion. Um, it would literally be, uh, yeah, again, I don't want to say too much in public. It, it may not provide all of the answers uh, that Ms. Lizinski may be seeking. Um, I'm happy to discuss it with you offline, uh, to the extent that that's okay. Um, but I, I, you know, if we were to go into exec tonight uh, and the fact that those individuals are not right, the discussion would be very limited.
Then may I suggest that at our board meeting in January that all the appropriate notifications are made and any summary that's presented to the full department exec session be done?
Yes.
Good.
Are there?
Can I just ask a question generally on that number five?
Yes.
Just generally, when the, the item is asking that we approve return individuals from administrative leave. What, whenever that's done, there might still be a pending investigation of our, such that there could be an investigation ongoing with individuals coming back from leave.
So, yeah, uh, I'll speak in very general term. Uh, individuals, uh, at some point may be placed on paid administrative leave uh, in order for the district to conduct its own investigation. However, despite the fact that the district may have completed its own investigation, there may be investigations by outside entities, uh, whether it be an insurance company or some other governmental type entity. Uh, those could still be ongoing, uh, and we could, um, we could, as a result of the fact that the district concludes its own internal investigation, uh, those individuals could be returned to duty uh, in the school. But at the same time, there may be other uh, entities that are, that are looking at the situation, if that makes any sense.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. So it, with regard to any agenda item tonight, investigation by the district has concluded.
A- as a general rule, uh, individuals, again, because these individuals were not rights. Uh, so as a general rule, when individuals are brought back from paid administrative leave, uh, you can um, be sure that the district has completed whatever it needs to do in order to be satisfied that the individual should be returned to work.
Thank you.
Mr. Hastings, can we um, like note, note that Ms. Breach is here now. I solved the problem.
Yeah, she just waved to us.
Is being noted on the record. Are there any, any questions related to items on B three? B four?
Oh, I just wanted to notice number seven, retirements of the two individuals that have been here thirty four years. Uh, Mary Stacy and Apelia Coolley are now retiring at the monumental for thirty four years of the district.
Absolutely. And we appreciate their service to our students. B four? Any questions related to any items there? Any questions related to any items on B five?
The, um, I did have a question. The iPad that we're getting for the pre-K, they currently have tablets, right? So we'd be replacing the tablets that they currently have?
Um, so they currently don't have an additional device, so it would be in addition to the tablet.
So they would have the iPad, so, so essentially they have two tablets.
The tablet is really more for the hotspot.
Okay.
It provides internet connectivity. There are limited things that they can do on the tablet, but they actually need the full keyboard to, excuse me, to be able to expand out, you know, and have a little more robust of an experience.
Okay, but they're getting, this is, this says they're getting iPads, so iPads don't have a keyboard attached to them?
Um.
I can answer that, Mr. Hastings.
Yes.
So, yeah, so we use the iPad because in preschool, um, the touch screens work better for them. And yes, even though they already have a tablet, obviously you can do a lot more with an iPad and our students are very accustomed to using iPads in the classroom. And we have set the iPads for all our students in the classrooms. We just don't want to give those out to them. So we're gonna provide iPads for all pre-K students. We're gonna use the tablets as our connectivity to the internet in the home. So that's how we're gonna work with the two systems together.
Okay, so uh, Madam Superintendent was talking about a keyboard. Is there gonna be an additional keyboard attachment?
No, I originally did do for K, for kindergarten, the second grade, we're providing them Chromebooks. And I think that's where a little bit of disparity came in, um, because some people were questioning, why aren't we doing iPads for kindergarten, first day? That's what we felt like we can handle, starting to use the keyboard and start to work, um, in that way as they move up. And they continue to work. Yeah, yeah, they're able to get accustomed to Chromebooks and how those systems work. But at pre-K, we felt very strongly about where they are, three year olds and four year olds, because the iPad seems to be the better way to go for them.
Mr. Hastings, can you, Mr. Hastings, can you turn the mic off? Because there's back feedback.
Um, on item twelve, I just wonder, who is our, uh, who's our higher ed partner going to be on that grant?
That would be Monmouth University.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
Any questions related to items on B five? Okay, seeing as though there are no more questions, that completes that portion. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And now, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have on the business agenda C one through C three. Uh, I would point to a couple items on C one. We are approving our statement of assurance for our health and safety inspections. Those are done annually by the Buildings and Grounds Supervisor, along with the principals and my office. Uh, that's a long checklist. It's sort of a uh, a hundred percent checklist and an eighty percent checklist. So as there are certain items, we must be a hundred percent compliant with and other items that we must be eighty percent compliant with. Uh, those, as I said, are done annually and submitted, so we'll be providing the statement of assurance to the DWE that those have been completed. Um, again, as I had mentioned earlier, we're gonna have our long range facility update uh, presentation momentarily. Um, and I'd just like to acknowledge the two donations, uh, and award that are on page C two, five A, which is from uh, Kyle Whedon on behalf of the Kazik Brothers of fifteen Thanksgiving baskets. Uh, and the donation from Dave Kalish uh, of some lightly worn clothing items, uh, that will be distributed to students um, and/or families, uh, as well as an award of ninety five presented stone licenses uh, for English for grades K to six. I'd be happy to take any questions. Yes, Ms. Lizinski?
Can you just go over number nine, the budget not, uh, modifications? Uh, just explain that.
Sure. So as uh, we've talked about, there was a water leak, a significant water leak at the Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. As Ms. Etienne mentioned, uh, in her Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting update, the total uh, cost associated with the demolition and then repairs to the damage is about four hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, that money is going to be reimbursed to the district through uh, insurance funds. Uh, so rather than transferring money out of accounts uh, to create the purchase orders and to pay the contractor uh, and then create a reimbursement that way, we're anticipating that money that will be reimbursed by the carrier uh, and sort of effectively increasing our budget by four hundred thousand dollars, uh, that'll then be reimbursed. So we're recognizing the revenue because it's gonna come from the carrier and we're preparing the expenditure in the purchase order that'll go to the construction company making the repairs.
The other question I have, uh, the revision to the organizational chart, what was changed?
Yeah, I'll let Ms. Gray answer that question.
One of uh, our central office administrators, our director of school counseling, her resignation becomes effective at the end of this month. And so the roles and responsibilities that will not, that were there will have now been reassigned and redistributed to other central office administrators, as we will not be replacing that director's position.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your questions. I'll turn it back to Madam President.
Okay. So if you might go to President?
Sure. Okay, so we have a, our district architect, SSP Architectural with us. We have Jean and Tammy uh, from the firm. Uh, Tammy's gonna uh, do a presentation. Well, Tammy's gonna be the mechanics of the presentation and then Jean will go through it. Uh, we're gonna go through the presentation. Uh, I think given the virtual nature of this, it may be easier to let her complete the presentation and then ask questions. Uh, but if you feel the urge to uh, ask, please ask. Just give us a second. We'll turn the presentation uh, ability over to uh, Ms. Stojko. Okay, Tammy, it looks like it's to you.
Are you seeing? Are you seeing my screen? No.
No.
Are you seeing my screen, Jeff?
I am not.
Is there something I need to do to present?
See my social?
All right, so you should be able to go to your share button on the bottom. It is your share button.
There we go.
And it should then open up. There we go. We're seeing some activity.
Perfect.
All right.
Okay, Jean, it's to you if you're ready.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Jean Parentoni with SSP Architects. And with me is Tammy Stojko. And what we're gonna do this evening is just give you a brief summary report on the long range facility process that we've engaged in for, for several months with the district, as well as tell you what it is, why it's important, you know, basic contents. And in addition to what we're gonna show you, there is about sixty pages of a report that you will be receiving as a PDF, just as a follow-up to this. Next. And just to let you know who is involved in the process, um, you see my name and Tammy, as well as us, one of our associates Kate, as well as we've had MEP engineers and we have a demographer as part of our team, George Sundell of Sundance Associates. And in addition to that, then you see a whole list of those in the district that actually had input on the process. We did a lot of this virtual, some of it was actually in person because we did have teams that went out to the schools. And obviously Tammy has been working very closely with uh, with Walter Sosa uh, in the facility end of it. So that was been part of the process. A lot of it has been obviously virtual and including interviews and assessments were done virtually. Just to let you know what the process is, it's still a basic master planning process where you gather the information, we're assessing it against the existing. We always start with the existing building, because that's what it is. It's a facilities report. So we're looking at the existing facilities, but then we're making comparisons to obviously what programs are operating, what programs need to operate. And in particular, we need to do a demographic enrollment projection. So the critical thing is to look at the capacities and the capacity evaluations for that. And then obviously it was a big part of this particularly long range plan update was this idea of grade reorganization and consolidation of buildings. Next. And why is it important? Jeff had mentioned that this is something that's required by the State Department of Education, so every school district has to do it. But the reason why it has value is that it really should become your action plan. It is a uh, a web-based document in addition to the sixty page uh, kind of physical document that goes with it that really shows your set of priorities and lists your basic needs for the districts over the next five years, but it really is more than five years. Uh, someone mentioned that it includes wishlist items. It does. It has high priority, critical need, need to go in the near future, but it also has things that can happen as options in the long range future. The reason why that's important is because the Department of Education considers this document your gate. The reason why that's important is because the Department of Education considers this document your gateway master plan document. In other words, for you to do any kind of capital work, it has to be identified in this document. And so in order to encourage districts to do, to use this effectively, there's no penalty for putting things in the document. There's only a penalty if you don't have something in the document. So that's why they want it to be comprehensive and inclusive at this point in time. And in addition to that, they want to say, yes, you're looking at numbers, but you're also looking at programs. Let's look at the numbers. Tammy was gonna go on to the numbers. This document has a lot of words. I'm not gonna try and to go over that. But in particular, I just want you to look at those bar graphs because that is kind of a pictorial illustration of your enrollments. The blue lines, the ones that are, you see those six blue lines in the beginning, those are your past history. So those are the past six years of enrollment in the district. And you can see there's a steady decrease happening within, a little bit ups and downs, but kind of a steady decrease. That has constituted about a twelve percent decrease of your past enrollment part of it. The green bars in the middle are your next five years. So this is the active demographic enrollment projections that will be sent to the State Department of Education. And this is a document that has to be signed off by the demographer, by George Sundell, and gets approved and accepted by the Department of Education. And in particular, you can see it's kind of a continuation of that downward slight trend, but it's now leveling off a bit. It's really indicating maybe a five percent decrease over the next five years. And the part in gold, that little gold part at the top, just shows you the plus or minus percentage because these demographics are plus one percent error deviation. And that over five years can be up to five percent. So that's the cushion in there. The light green, the five years beyond this, show you what, it's like a peak ahead to your ten-year enrollment projection. And these are done with a little bit less verification because, you know, this is something in the future and a lot of other conditions can impact them in the future. And that's why they're light green. They are not included to the state, but the district has it in the reports. And you can still make judgments to see whether the overall trend is still decreasing or was there something that's gonna change that in the long range. This way you can kind of look at your facility capital needs and to adjust for it. Overall, as you can see, the downward trend is from two factors. One is the continuing decline in birth rates. So that's affecting not only this district, but the whole state of New Jersey. This has been a general decline in birth rates and that affects the incoming number of students. The other is the increasing competition for your students. Right now, you have about fifty percent, you've captured about fifty percent of the market. Of those students that are living in the district attend the public schools. Approximately twenty percent attend charter schools. In particular, some other, then another five percent go to parochials. And then you have obviously homeschoolers and you have others going to private school. The projection is showing that that may increase slightly with the charter school. And you heard about some increases of their facility capacity. So that may grow over the next five years from twenty to twenty-five percent of a capture of the students. So that is just something that is rolled into it. The main thing I want to bring your attention to is that red line at the very top of the chart. That red line represents the existing capacity you have in your buildings. And that is excluding Barack Obama building. So with your four buildings, the red line is above the bars. And that's what we're really kind of documenting to the state of New Jersey is that you can take, easily take Barack Obama offline, decommission it and officially ask that permission from the state and verify that. And this is the proof to them that you have enough capacity in the other buildings to accommodate your students, not only this year, but also in the near future and five years, even taking a peek five years from now. And that's what we needed to make sure that we had documented in this report. Next. And these are the big numbers I wanted to bring. So your maximum capacity based on the four schools, Asbury Park High School, Martin Luther King, Thurgood Marshall and Bradley School is two thousand seven hundred. And that's if every classroom is being occupied and every seat being occupied. That's why it's called a maximum. And that's on facility efficiency standards that are guidelines set by the state. What operating capacity and that's based on how you use the buildings, the district practices. And that is at two thousand three hundred students. So given that your demographic enrollment is projected to be about seventeen hundred, you can see that you still have a cushion of space, which is why we still are demonstrating to the state that your capacity is adequate. Next. Then in addition to the demographic, we also take a look at your educational adequacy needs. And in particularly, one of the things that we were looking at and talking to your staff is part of the reasons for that consolidation of facilities. Though it's definitely to streamline expenses and to reduce operating costs, but at the same time, you can still maintain your quality programming because you were able to consolidate some of the grade levels in the buildings. And the whole idea is to then look at ways that we can in the kind of diagrams that go along with this report is focus on how you can cluster grades together, how you can focus on small learning communities, making sure that various academies that you have set up can be expanded with the, with access to different grade levels through career and college offerings. And we're also looking to make sure that all the classrooms, you know, really are well-equipped, whether it's through furnishings or equipment or the infrastructure support for your various multimodal platforms, as you can see, as you get even smaller and smaller mobile devices and more collaborative and virtual reality and other components coming into learning, making sure that you have that infrastructure support for them. So those are your focus areas. And the next slide reinforces the support areas. And that's the idea is that, yes, we want to help support those programs. And in addition to that, as you consolidate the buildings, there may be things that are done. And the district is really kind of, you know, really examine this in depth in terms of how they're going to change entrances, how they're going to assign stairwells, how they're going to basically put the students in their clustered areas, be able to time-share the big special activity areas within the building so that everybody has access to it. At the same time, you're able to kind of create a home-based feel for the different grade levels. Especially, you know, that's especially important at the high school, which will now be kind of a junior, senior program with the seventh and eighth grade joining the high school. And as you have also in the Martin Luther King with your grades four through six. So that's a big developmental age range for those years. And you want to make sure that you have that home-based feel for the fourth graders, which is different from the sixth graders and the opportunities that you provide for those in that building. So that's part of your vision and your goals. And these are the capital guidelines. And for the most part, this is what Tammy has really in-depth kind of reviewed with Walter and from the facilities and maintenance staff. We always start that no matter what, what has to be in this report. If there's anything that's basically code, life safety, or anything that has to do with, you know, adherence to the changing nature of what's happening with security, safety, egress and that things, that's a top-tier component. We made sure that that's in the report. Then we have the health and welfare capital needs. And that can be from the thermal envelope of the building, the windows, the floors, the doors, making sure that they're all operating because none of them operate. That also precludes the building being able to be used, so making sure of the stormwater management component with it. And then you obviously have safety and security criteria. And one of the things that includes, that's everything from like door hardware and access controls all the way to making sure you have the proper lighting and things like that. And then you have the educational, the fourth tier is the things I was talking about in terms of supporting the educational adequacy for it. And these are all in the report and they will be then have priority ratings with it as part of that web-based information that gets sent to the State Department of Education. And just to give you a snapshot on your buildings, you can see, this is just the general description because you will have, in addition to Barack Obama being decommissioned and now available for some of the uses that you're gonna be talking about this evening, whether it's for Board of Education Administrative Services or whether it's, you know, putting social services in a building, that will be up for discussion and review for how you're gonna use it. You'll be maxing out, you'll be including a greater number of pre-K students in both Thurgood Marshall and Bradley because they'll be taking on the younger kids that are, that were going to Obama previously. So there'll be more assigned numbers because it's a primary education. You'll have greater number of pre-K classrooms. And for the most part, it's been projected that you'll stay around, I think it's about a hundred and seventy students in-house in your facilities. You will still have five outside providers that provide about a hundred and fifty students for your pre-K. And that's projected to remain fairly steady over the next five years. Then obviously Martin Luther King will have the grade change. You'll only have three grades in there, so you still will have plenty of extra space in that building. Its capacity is about six hundred and you're gonna have about three hundred to three hundred and fifty students in there. So there will be some rooms that will be available that can be looked at for different purposes. And then your high school, by going with five grades in there, you're really now kind of growing into full use of that building. That building's previous report, when we did the long range facility plan five years ago, that capacity for that building was rated much lower. And that was because at the time you had about four hundred to four hundred and fifty kids in there. There were just nine through twelve. So there were a lot of rooms that were being used for resources that were not capacity generating. Now you can see that the capacity for this building is gonna be about, a maximum capacity of about a thousand or a thousand and fifty. And your kind of day-to-day daily practices is gonna be about eight fifty. And that's still gonna be under the number of students that you're gonna have in that building. So you have plenty of capacity in the high school. But people might be confused, say, why was it previously, you know, marked so low? That was because of the way the building was used, you know, five years ago when it was a nine through twelve. It'll be used slightly differently as a seven through twelve. And then the last slide that we have is just kind of a listing of the general capital improvements that we're really kind of including into the report. And you can see that we always start with that safety, security, the barrier free, all the code compliant improvements are still that top priority. Making sure that you can enter the buildings, that there's circulation is working. Some of the items that were brought to our attention from the staff input and the supervisors were that upgrades, timely upgrades to existing facilities can make a big difference in terms of the delivery of programs and the opportunities that students have. And that includes some upgrades to your cafeterias, your gyms, your stages and assembly areas. And that includes things like, you know, stage lighting and some finishes with that. And particularly the tension that's really being directed towards your science labs, making sure that the sinks work, that the ventilation is adequate. The same thing with the spaces earmarked for your steam program, you know, your science, technology, engineering, arts and math programs, as well as collaboration areas that you have. So those are the critical things with that kind of grade realignments in the academies that you have with that. Support for your small learning communities and your academies. And then we go back to the capital work. It's still, you gotta keep the water out of the buildings. You still have to make sure that there's thermal comfort in the building. And there's a bunch of items in here that Tammy might want to elaborate on that obviously work with your energy saving improvement plan. So the idea is what can be done or financed that's not in your operating budget in other creative ways. And that includes items that are related to energy saving, resource conservation or sustainability can be done through the BPU grants and programs that they have for school districts that allow that by paying your utility bills, you can finance improvements that are specific to energy savings. The whole idea is to have that done separately. But at the same time, improvements for hardwares and getting the doors to operate well and things like that and the new furnishings that you'll need over time, those are things that need to be in this capital plan. And that's really, that's really the gist of the plan. And in addition to what you'll receive is you'll see we have diagrams for each of the schools that kind of show how the schools and how the schools will be used under the new grade configuration. So at that, we're open for questions along the way about the process or what it means or what the implications are.
I'd like to go back to the capacity issues. Are there standards or guidelines out there as to what's overcapacity? We've had a state auditor come out last time with Barack Obama online telling us, you know, dinging us that we have to do something. And now looking at these capacity numbers, I'm concerned that the same thing's going to happen.
What, yes, and one of the things that's important to do, I'm glad you asked that question. Kim, if you can go back to the slide that has a capacity, the slide that says the capacity is adequate. I had mentioned, how do we, no.
The one that, oh, the one that I passed.
Yes, the one you passed. Your trigger finger is happy. That one. One of the things I want to really emphasize is there's something called a facilities efficient standard. That is the Department of Education's, the state of New Jersey, established guidelines for the number of students it recommends to have in a classroom. That's the numbers that I use to calculate your maximum capacity. So for examples, in pre-K, that cap is fifteen per classroom. For special education, the range could be anywhere between two or three, depending on the kind of classification of the students, all the way up to twelve students per classroom. Again, depending on the type of classification that you have. For primary grades through grades one through three, the recommendation is that you have approximately twenty-one students per classroom. For grades four through the middle school years, four through eight, the recommendation is you have up to twenty-three students per classrooms. And for the high school, you're up to twenty-four per classroom. So I use the state's number in order to help get this approved. I made sure that we're using the state's criteria as establishing the capacities so there is no separation or gap between that. And at the same time, what the state allows is they say they realize that since students don't come in nice packages, that there's exactly, you know, forty students in this grade level that you can divide evenly into, or forty-five, you have forty-five pre-K students that you can divide into three classrooms of fifteen. Sometimes there might be forty-three or something, some other number. Is that what they allow districts is to use as a multiplier, what they call utilization multiplier, of approximately ninety percent. So that you're saying on any given day or any given year, you're at really a good operating capacity, a very thorough, efficient education if you're at ninety percent capacity for that. And that's what that two thousand three hundred and eighteen represents is your utilization factor thrown in there for that. And the key thing they will be looking at is that to make sure that your demographic enrollments, which is the numbers down at the bottom, the one thousand seven hundred and eighty-one to one thousand six hundred and thirty-nine pre-K twelve students, that's what has to be under those two upper numbers for that, to make sure that you have adequate capacity for that. Now, the thing that we have in the diagrams, it was we literally labeled the classrooms so that we counted up the number of pre-K classrooms you need, the number of kindergarten classrooms you need, the number of fourth grades, fifth grades, sixth grades. And we actually labeled it on the diagram. So we actually even have that as a further illustration that the capacities are adequate. I hope that was, is that answering your question?
Well, you may not be the one to answer it. I get that the capacity is adequate. I'm worried about other aspects of this state telling us we're, we're in effect doing too well on capacity. And whether you as an architect see guidelines as to what becomes overcapacity. If I've got demographics showing in five years, we're gonna be at something like seventeen hundred and operationally, we could do twenty-three hundred.
Yes, but.
I see your point about, right, we have to be above to be able to say, wanna do. Are we too far above?
No, I think that, and they will be looking at that very closely because the, your two primary schools, Marshall and Bradley, will be, you know, they'll be in good use. In other words, they'll be approaching that ninety percent utilization, you know, in that period, you know, the between, between eighty and ninety percent utilization. So that'll be seen as a good use of those two buildings. All the classrooms will be engaged, but you still have rooms that can be assigned for art, for music, for, you know, steam and for your library. So it really will show the full comprehensive component and the building being well utilized. The high school, by having it being seven through twelve, that will show it as unlike what it is right now, where they can say, oh, you got too many classrooms that are only being used one or two periods. This will now show a more robust use of the high school with having five grades in there. This will now show a more robust use of the high school with having five grades in there and how that can be, but at the same time, keeping the seventh and eighth grades primarily located on the second floor, so they have a home base associated with the classrooms and making sure that they can get their language arts, their science, their math, all those programs that have sufficient capacity on that second floor for their general-purpose classrooms. But they'll also have access to some of the academy rooms or based on a timeshare arrangement with that. The school that, well, you'll still have some capacity gap is really just Martin Luther King. And that's the one, because that building was originally designed to hold up to four grade levels, you know, really has that robust capacity for four grade levels, but it only has three grade levels. So you can say that that's the one building that has, you know, okay, that's a little bit lower on its percent of utilization, but one building out of four, that's not going to raise a red flag for the state at all, because it's just a few classrooms. It's not like, it's not district-wide.
And if I might also add, that was why I was very intentional when I looked at the restructuring and the reorganization of, and consolidating the district schools from five buildings into four and why the grade configuration is what the grade configurations are.
Yes, in fact, one of the things, we had many long discussions and talking about ways that you can help with student transitions. In other words, if there's a big drop-off between grades five and six as students exit for other options, having them in the same buildings, that parents are, you know, associated with it and parents see, you know, the relationship with teachers that they're establishing, having a four, five, six has some benefits for that transition. The same thing with those grades seven and eight. The idea is that if they're here for seven and eight and in the high school and partaking with some of those academy programs in addition to their home-based classrooms, they may stay for high school as opposed to going elsewhere in the building. So that's what we're talking about with those school transitions.
So I have a question.
Yes, Barbara? Is that Barbara? Barbara, go ahead, please.
Barbara, you're on.
Martin Luther King has a limited capacity. It's not utilized as it should. Maybe our focus should be on moving administration to that building instead of Barack Obama. It's already handicap accessible, it has everything it needs, and maybe some slight modifications, but maybe it's something we could consider instead of Obama.
Well, actually, it has space, but it doesn't have enough space. It doesn't have 10,000 extra square feet, which is what you basically have a need for at the Board of Education level. In other words, it has a cluster of four classrooms on one floor, it has one or two classrooms on other floors. You don't have an area of the building that would be suitable for siphoning off into a Board of Education wing or separation of it. It's really, it, you know, it really does not lend itself to a separate use other than a few classrooms towards the end. It could be fine for supervisor's office or some spin-off satellite offices that might be in there, but it's not going to accommodate your full Board of Education needs.
How did you come up with 10,000 square feet? Just because the building on Fourth Avenue may have excess capacity for-
Right, I'm using that from memory, but in terms of when we were looking at the programming aspect of it, and Tammy, you might want to jump in, because I know you've been looking at the capacity needs for the Board of Education, is, you know, we're still basing it on the number of staff and the type of rooms and the kind of the suite arrangements that you have between business offices, between superintendent's offices, conference spaces, meeting spaces, and things like that.
I think we were at least 8,500 on what we were looking at with the org chart and the program of what we were looking at for that, yes. It was between 8,500 and 10,000.
Maybe I would challenge the Buildings and Grounds Committee to look at that, because maybe the space in the Fourth Avenue building is a little bit bigger than actually is utilized to a day-to-day basis, and we can use other places within the school district for some of those rooms instead of, you know, including it in 10,000 square feet that maybe we're not utilizing every day.
Okay, and that's fair, but I just wanted to, I don't want to overemphasize the extra capacity at Martin Luther King, because it's piecemeal extra capacity. In other words, it's not that you're going to have a wing open. And in particular, the way it's being structured is that the fourth graders would be on the ground floor, the fifth graders would be on the second floor, and the sixth graders would be on the third floor, and then you have your core large spaces. So while you might have a couple of classrooms that are the resource for those grade levels on each of the floors, you don't really have a section of that building that would be completely appropriate for just siphoning it off. Some of the other buildings, like, you know, the high school has more potential. If you didn't have seventh through 12, you could take off a wing or do something else separately, but the Martin Luther King does not lend itself to a Board of Education just plopping it into it, unless you were to take over the whole ground floor. But that would then preclude the ability to have a home base for fourth grade, a home base for fifth grade, and a home base for sixth grade, which educationally is what the district educators would prefer.
The other question I had is, how did you come about your student population increase or decrease? Because right now with some of the families that are moving, and we do have young couples that are going to have children that will go to our school district, and then you have the additional COVID seclusion where you don't know what's going to happen after a few months in the spring and summer, what's going to happen to increase population.
That's right. Tammy, if you can go to the demographic slide? In the fine print, and I'm speaking for now George Sundell, which is the demographer. He basically has said that the enrollment, projected enrollment decrease is approximately 89 students, 90 students. But that is despite the immigration of 210 students from new housing developments. So he has accounted for the Boston Way Village, Lincoln Village, the Parkview and Asbury Park Gardens, and he's projecting that you will have 210 new students coming in from those developments. And he has to find a formula, because these are, what he has to account for over five years are the ones that are essentially planned or approved that are on the books for the city, and he works with the city directly for those, that information. There may still be other projects that are being talked about that may affect the light green numbers that are in the next five years, but that aren't with the dark green numbers. But his point is that right now that you're still staying fairly flat, even though you're going to have 210 new students coming in. Otherwise, your graph would be sharper decline, to tell you the truth.
Okay, thank you very much. Very informative. And you said that there will be a PDF that will be emailed to the members?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great.
Happy holidays to you.
Thank you.
Okay, I need to, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to open for the seven o'clock. What'd you say? And good evening and happy holidays to you. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046, PL 1975 CT31 S1, amended 2006 C70 S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the New Coaster on December 3, 2020 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on December 3, 2020. Our mission statement is that the Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, your call, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I'll remind you to unmute yourself, pause, and then mute after you're done. Is that TM?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Mr. LaRocca?
Here.
Ms. Lozinski?
Here, don't forget to speech, breach.
Ms. Breach? Mr. Bigby?
Here.
Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Ms. Oliver Sanderson?
Here.
Do you stand for the flag, someone? United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Hastings, whenever you're ready, please read number five.
Thank you. Okay. As the, we're going to blame Mr. Weiss for this. As the state has changed their requirements and updated some of their requirements on the virtual meeting aspect of our boards of ed meetings, page and a half to read. This is a one-time only, so that's the plus. The bad news is a page and a half. On March 9, 2020, in view of the COVID-19 pandemic, Governor Phil Murphy declared a public health emergency, terms of Executive Order 103, which was subsequently extended several times and remains in effect as of this date. And A.D. of PL 2020 C34 authorizes the director. Everybody, please make sure you're muted. Whereas Section 8 of PL 2020 C34 authorizes the Director of the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs to promulgate regulations establishing the standard protocols for remote meetings, remote public meetings held by a local public body during a governor-declared emergency, including minimum procedures to be followed to provide reasonable public notice and allowance for public input. Whereas the Director of the DCA has promulgated emergency regulations establishing the standard protocols during such remote public meetings, codified as NJAC 5:39-1.1 through 1.7. And whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education is a public body that is subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. And whereas in view of the public health emergency as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the board will conduct some or all of its meetings remotely through video and telephonic conferencing. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby adopts the following standard procedures for comments submitted by members of the public in advance of and/or during its current and future remote and/or hybrid public meetings. One, in the case of a remote and/or hybrid meetings, all advanced written comments must be received by the board secretary/business administrator no later than the close of the public comments portion of the meeting, during which such comments are to be considered. Comments may be submitted by mail or email as follows. Mail to Jeffrey Hastings, Business Administrator, Board Secretary, Asbury Park Board of Education, 910 Fourth Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey, 07712. Email address, publiccomment@publiccomment@asburypark.k12 nj.us. Two, in the case of remote and/or hybrid meetings, commenters may voice their comments via audio dialing and/or video during the public comment portion of the meeting. Three, all members of the public who wish to submit and/or make comments during the public comment portion of remote and/or hybrid meetings shall be required to identify themselves by name and provide their street address. Four, all public comments must conform to basic standards of civility. Disruptive, threatening, and/or profane written comments will not be read or entertained. If spoken or otherwise received during the meeting, the commenter will be stopped and/or muted and may be removed from the meeting. Five, all advanced written comments submitted in accordance with the above requirements that are not duplicative will be read aloud during the public comment portion of the meeting, subject to the three-minute time limitation placed on all comments, and will be read from the beginning of the comment until the time has expired. Duplicative comments may be passed over, but must be noted for the record with content summarized in the minutes. Members of the public who wish to verbally address the board during the public comment portion of the board meetings may do so by either video and/or telephone for three minutes and will be unmuted or asked to unmute themselves when it is their time to speak. At the conclusion of an individual's public comment or at the conclusion of three minutes, whichever is earlier, the individual's microphone shall be muted. Additional information regarding the interactive public comment portions of the meeting may be available on the board's website at www.aisburypark.k12 nj.us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. You did an awesome job.
If I may just address the board before there's a motion. The reason why we're doing this now is because the new rules came out from the, the DCA put them out in or around, I want to say August, don't quote me on the exact time. But by then or around that time, the board was utilizing live, in-person meeting formats. So there was no need to have essentially virtual meetings or provide the public with the way to comment during a virtual meeting, because you were having live and in-person meetings. Tonight marks the first remote board meeting since in or about August. And therefore, as a result, it's important that the board adopts this resolution tonight, and it's also required to be read aloud, which it was. So that's the reason why we're first seeing this now.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion, please, to accept the resolution.
Second.
Any questions? Go ahead, call Mr. Hastings, please.
Is that TM?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Bigby?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Sanderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And am I unmuted?
You're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Now we have a presentation, another presentation?
We do.
Okay. Or no, I was just going to make comments. Okay, I have to present. So in an effort to ensure that we have increased communication with the Board of Education and the public, tonight, Mr. Hastings, our board secretary and board administrator, business administrator, will report out on our district goal number four. We have four district goals. The two meetings ago, we had a presentation on our district goal number two. Tonight will be district goal number four.
Okay. So this is our report out on our district goals. As you're aware, our goals are divided into four subcategories. Goal number one being academic excellence. Goal number two, community and parent engagement. Goal number three is our innovative practices. And goal number four, which is managed or worked on by Dr. Howard Morris, Mr. Medina and myself, is collaborative community and fiscal accountability. The subgrouping below that and sort of mission statement or action plan is to develop a plan to repurpose the Barack H. Obama Elementary School and take and/or recommend the steps necessary to accomplish that repurposing. and take and or recommend the steps necessary to accomplish uh that repurposing. So when we talk about the Barack H. Obama School, we're looking uh at sort of two different areas uh to utilize that building. One is in a public uh private partnership style agreement. Uh and we've had some ideas there, talking about creating emergent care facilities, perhaps working with uh Meridian or or some of the other health agencies to to make available emergent care for our families and community members in that part of town. Uh a second uh area that has been discussed with Dr. Howard Morris, Mr. Medina and myself has been adult and or student training in areas uh that have industry valued credentials. So we've talked about utilizing the trade unions, so the I V E W or the plumbers and pipe pipe fitters union. We've talked about technical certifications in perhaps utilizing Microsoft style certifications, but using that building to create classrooms where we can train adults and students both um uh on trades or technical areas so that they can get certifications so that if they decide not to move on to college uh as they graduate, they have a a different path to take. Uh we've also looked at uh intergovernmental agreement agreements. We've talked about working with the city and perhaps the rec department to utilize the gymnasium for athletics, to utilize the athletic fields outside for athletic activity. Uh we've talked about the auditorium uh on the second floor of the building to work with, again, probably the rec department or or other arts commissions within the city to utilize that area for performing arts. We've talked about uh areas where we can work with the city and or the county on helping uh open social services offices. So if community members need uh someplace to go to get more information about services that are available to them, they can come to the Barack building and have that available uh during certain days of the week. Uh we've also talked about the media center and how to utilize the media center and and talked about having the library on the sort of uh northeast side of town, and this is the southwest side of town. So again, to have that media center uh with the computers and and those sorts of uh uh tools available to community uh as well as perhaps creating historic displays or museum style displays to talk about uh different topics that could be set up in conjunction with different groups within the city uh and be on display for folks to come and see. Uh how are we gonna decide what those purposes are and and how are we gonna arrive at what the priority should be? Well, we've talked about creating a decision matrix. Uh our decision matrix takes our ideas and sort of lists some vertically down the left side there. Uh we then look at common factors that we have, uh such as district needs, community needs. Is there gonna be revenue generation? What's the lead time on these types of projects? And what perhaps is the cost associated with making the building and or facilities appropriate for those uses? Uh so you've sort of created this grid and this decision matrix. We've talked about weighted averages, so perhaps district and community represents thirty percent apiece uh of a score, uh with lead time and cost representing fifteen percent each, uh followed by revenue generation. And then taking those scores and assigning them, for example, if we were to update the media center and create historic displays, out of a hundred, what would we score that as a district need? So perhaps, and these are examples, these are not actual numbers, uh perhaps the district need is twenty-five percent, but from the community standpoint, it may be fifty percent out of a hundred. Uh from a revenue generation, it may be fairly low at twenty-five percent. Lead time would be, again, relatively low, so in that category, you'd get a higher score for a lower lead time. So that would be seventy-five. And again, cost being about average, so that would be fifty. And if you look, based on those weighted averages, you're looking at an overall score of about forty-four out of a hundred. Uh and then the column there on the far right is just a graphical uh representation of those scores, so you could easily look up and down to gauge which were uh higher rated versus lower rated. So again, this is a tool that we're working on and that we will distribute uh to various stakeholders to get their input on it and then create uh a sort of final document that we can then move forward with and discuss with the superintendent and and the board to see how we want to move forward uh with the uses uh for central office uh for the Barack Obama uh school. Uh one of those obviously is central office, and what is central office gonna do and where are we gonna be in in a year and a half? Uh the superintendent has created a three-phase approach for this. Uh we've already uh completed our phase one, which was sort of defining our exit strategy of 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 looking at the lease and the lease termination and seeing uh when that is and then getting the uh central office staff out of the building uh by that time. We're looking at the employees and various departments, what space and infrastructure needs there are, were there inefficiencies in the way the building was uh set up here? Uh and then introducing the plan to our uh board of ed committees, and it has been discussed uh several times with our B and G committee and our finance committee. Uh the other thing that we needed to do was get into our long-range facility plan, uh some sort of statement about what we were doing in central office and move that forward as well. So that's why we have the uh L R F P on for approval uh for tonight. Um our second phase, which is uh to uh end basically in January of twenty twenty-one, looks at our funding options. So we've talked about the five-year capital or ground lease option that will be available to us. Uh we've talked about uh putting together uh proposals, uh analyzing those proposals, and then also analyzing the modular bill versus the renovation of Barack. Uh and and seeing what those things look like and what those costs are. And in working with the architect, we've looked at the Barack Obama building and had those walkthroughs and what uh needs to be done at that building. It is a change of use now uh from student to adult office. Uh so that then opens us up to compliance with new rules and regulations, for example, um uh A D A compliance, so that creates various projects that now must be done to make that space available. Uh and then when the board was discussing the um the maintenance shop and and what we were looking at at uh our maintenance building, we had at that point uh several months ago, asked the architect, what would it look like if we did a modular there and could we move central office to a modular on that property and perhaps move maintenance over to the Barack School? And both of those costs wound up being approximately the same. So they were all within about the two and a half million dollar mark. Our third and final phase, which looks to uh wind up and and wrap up at January of twenty twenty-two, includes the completed construction or renovation of our facility. Uh it looks at moving out of nine ten Fourth Avenue and doing inspections and making any repairs that are necessary, packing and vacating, and then uh the obvious technical uh moves. We have uh district backup servers uh here at our nine ten location, and we will be looking to move that as well to a a new location. When you talk renovation versus modular, what are the some of the things that 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 Dr. Howard Morris and Mr. Medina and I, along with the uh some of our other administrators have talked about? Look at the cost of the renovation that Obama versus a modular bill. And as I noted, they are approximately the same, based on the estimates we receive from the architect. You talk about customization of the layout of the office, um looking at our Barack building, which is a hundred years old, versus building a modular where we can create energy efficiencies and use green technology. We talk about future use. So by building a modular, we're looking at dedicated central office space. If you're talking about renovating one of our other buildings, you're looking at taking school uh space and converting that um I don't want to say permanently, but basically permanently into adult office space. Uh at a sort of thirty thousand foot level, we're looking at these options in terms of how they fit in the district and the community long-range plan. So uh when we look at the Barack Obama School and the upper elementary school, we're looking at um a brand-new playground that's been installed by the city, a water park. Uh we have older tennis courts there that could be renovated. We've talked about community use and rec department use of the gymnasium and the auditorium. We have the baseball field there with um with the upper elementary school in the back. So we're looking at that as a potential community hub, uh an activity center where students and community members can come and 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 participate in those various activities. Um there's also obviously unanticipated issues. So what are the possible uh pitfalls or minefields that that we may come across? So when you look at Barack, it is an older building. As you start to renovate and and do certain things there, there will be unanticipated expenses, I'm sure, just like with any project. And similarly with a a build of 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 a modular, depending on where we put it, there may be some un- unanticipated uh expenses associated with that. So we've looked at several locations uh for a modular and talked about where that building could fit. Uh we've looked at basically three different areas. One would be in the field between the Barack Obama School and the upper elementary school. But again, that takes up space, open space that that our our community desperately needs. We've looked at behind uh the upper elementary school, sort of near the Prospect Avenue basketball courts. Uh but again, there, we're taking up uh sort of that hub feel uh of what we may look at as that uh Obama slash upper elementary uh complex. Uh and then the third area we've looked at is the old tennis courts that are over by the high school. Uh and then that also places central office there at the high school. It 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 creates um a sort of a unity there with the high school and a lot of the activities that go on with the high school. It also helps uh that the project may uh address some some ancillary or tangential issues in terms of creating more parking uh for staff now that we have the seventh and eighth grade staff there, uh so we could get some of those folks off the streets. Then we could address some of the issues uh with the area behind the stadium, which is now gravel uh that could be then paved over and turned into parking, along with those older basketball courts that are sort of between the stadium and our baseball field. So those are some of the things we're looking at. Uh again, uh Dr. Howard Morris, Mr. Medina and I have 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 been working on this for a bit of time. Uh and we'd be happy to take any questions you may have uh regarding the presentation and and some of the things we've talked about.
Hi, Jeff. Hi, Jeff, it's Joe. Um I just had a question regarding um some of the green um efficiencies that would be included in in a modular building. Can you explain a little bit of that?
Well, there'd certainly be um HVACs uh efficiencies that could be utilized. Um you're talking about um as Ms. Gray points out, lead certifications. Uh Joe, you certainly uh are much more familiar with with some of those areas than than the rest of us are. Uh but we're talking about creating an energy-efficient, low-carbon footprint building that's both attractive and efficient uh for the community and the environment.
Anyone else have questions?
Lead certification.
I've got, I've got two.
Sustainability environment.
So Ms. ETN asked what lead certification was, and Ms. Gray was just uh talking about the acronym um about sustainability and the impact on the environment. Yeah, Mr. LaRocca?
Um it's kind of a substantive issue back in in looking at uses of the property. Have you, can you answer the question why uh an adult technical vocational training would not be duplicative of what the uh county vocational uh school or an adult program is good?
Right, so uh in terms of Dr. Howard Morris and Mr. Medina and I in our discussions, uh we're talking about availability of spaces at those various county uh vocational schools. Um you know, how many students are they admitting? How many students from each town are they admitting into those programs? Um obviously, putting it at our Barack building, priority is given to our students. Uh we've talked about uh the impact of expanding our C T E programs at the high school during the regular school day versus creating an after-school program at Barack where it could be both students and or adults and open to a wider um variety of 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 participants in those programs. And also so that it's it's not impacting the educational scheduling of our students currently at the high school and then pulling them out of there uh to move them over to um to the C T E or a a vocational program at Obama. The other issue obviously is uh the way we're looking at this, and Ms. Dr. Howard Morris can chime in if she'd like, but uh when you talk about programs at the high school, you're talking about working with the D O E and getting involved with a very structured and stringent C T E process. Uh the way we're looking at this is is partnering with the I V E W, partnering with perhaps uh plumbers and pipe fitters or whatever specialties or more traditional trades that may be um out there so that they can come help advise us, help work and create this sort of uh certification program or after-school program uh that is less strict and less structured than than maybe classes at a traditional high school, uh where our students can still get uh uh licenses or certifications or apprenticeship documents so they can then move forward in those uh fields of interest.
My my second question was, um did the architect give some kind of document? I'm wondering whether use of the Obama building on the first floor saves substantial money uh for offices, saves substantial money compared to the third floor. And all I could really think of is kind of the the constant headache of of elevator, but I don't know if there were other issues or if that's i- if there's any kind of distinctive difference there.
Did you ask?
Yes. Yeah, um two, thank you for your question. Um yes, there were a lot of other issues and considerations as to why the first floor was not being utilized and another floor would be utilized. A lot of it has to do with obviously being able to accommodate the space, but also if we are seriously um looking into these public-private partnerships, there are there's space on that first floor that would be better served. For example, as Jeff talked about, the potential for maybe a partnership for an urgent care or something of that nature, that that access for the community to come into the first floor and utilize that space in that way makes more sense. Also, the way the building is currently designed and what equipment is is kind of already there makes sense. The gym, all of those things would then need to be kind of like moved around to make it that dual usage, dual-use space.
Can I make a comment?
No, I won't say. Yes, yes.
I'm I'm uh more inclined to um go with the Obama usage than having a modular because then you take up precious space for recreation or other utilization of the open space. So that's just my opinion.
Right, so one of the benefits uh is that right now we have tennis courts that are not being utilized at the high school, and we have tennis courts that are not being utilized at the uh field in between Barack and the upper elementary. So um one, we would build on top of the current footprint of the tennis courts at the high school. Um we've provided the architects with previous engineering uh studies of that area. And then number two, in working with the city to create more of a hub, community feel, uh there is the chance of renovating those other tennis courts uh that are now next to the uh sort of the new playground slash workout area uh by the upper elementary.
I have a concern about the uh area on the high school because you have the baseball field right there. baseball field right there. That just doesn't seem like it's gonna jive there. It's uh an awful lot of space and with football and everything else there, I can't imagine that being actually considered.
Well, we um, I didn't bring it for tonight. We had the architect place the basic outline of the building on these various locations. Um, the concept would be that the building would go on that tennis court. We create a sidewalk from there to the, which is now the gravel area, and that would be paved to create parking uh from the Little League field almost over to uh the sort of outfield end of the basketball courts there uh where the varsity team plays. And again, this is, you know, these are things that we're looking at. This is not um you know, in stone yet. So what we're here to do tonight is to present the work that we've done so far in looking at the options that are out there and and what those options look like. What are some of the pros and cons of those various options? What are the costs associated with them? And then how does that sort of fit in with the overall plan of what we want to do moving forward? So uh, again, we're open to all all the comments and all considerations.
I appreciate Jeff, all the work and the staff that has uh, you know, compiled all this information and I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, Mr. Hastings, Dr. Howard Morris and Mr. Medina for your leadership and your work around this. If I may move into the superintendent's?
Yes, please.
Okay. Very briefly, uh, the superintendent's report, I just want to talk about and direct you. So my superintendent's report is kind of being folded into the data dashboard. Um, I wanted to just get a snapshot because I know during this virtual learning, um, there's always this kind of question in terms of engagement, student participation and student attendance. So I wanted to give a snapshot and I thought that this would be helpful for you to see from last year, pre-COVID, to this year, um, what our attendance looks like. And um, I also want to note that through the board approval, this board's approval of the acquisition of devices to ensure that our students had the hot have the hot spots in their homes and the additional um usage that they need to make sure that it's really capturing what they need instructionally. Uh, thanks to that approval that you've given, we're able to look at this attendance now and pull this kind of data for analysis to see where we fair. And so if you'll note the column on the on the bar graph, the bar graph to the left is last year, the bar graph to the right is this year. And so you'll note at the high school, even though we've had a restructuring of the grade configuration, we're still noting a slight increase of attendance of our students even in the virtual space, which is really an important indicator for us to um look at and monitor. And I want to thank all of the administrators for their work around ensuring that we have eyes, virtual and real in person eyes on our students. Um, the work that comes out of and as a part of the leadership from Dr. Howard Morris's team and Student Services with our attendance officers, making sure that they're doing home visits, our Director of School Counseling, Debbie Sylvia, who's making sure that the guidance counselors are with the uh attendance officers and the social workers from Student Services, all of these individuals are actually going out to make sure they're doing home visits, making sure there's connectivity when necessary. Uh, Mr. Bramley and his and the child study team, the nurses, all of those individuals are working collectively to ensure that. And so you'll see um the two areas where you kind of just see flat bars is with regard to Obama School for obvious reasons. Uh, you're gonna see it's gonna be flat there for this year because we don't have student attendance there. And then the upper elementary from last year, it was not fair. So that's how you interpret this bar graph and um it's good to know that the supports, the resources and the social and emotional learning uh initiatives combined with the academic piece for Mr. Ruiz as the Director of Practical Instruction and the supervisory team are working in tandem to make sure that our students remain engaged. Additionally, we will have to further um support that work and increase engagement. We are also launching our interactive SEO Educational Wellness Newsletter. It will be a virtual newsletter that will go out to all families. Uh, and the reason why we want to have it electronic is so that the hyperlinks on there are engaging and that's where the interactive piece comes from, where parents and students will be able to click on these links and see fresh new live contact content. The objective for that and why uh now is because we want to make sure that we send something home for our students during that longer break. What we understand that part of bridging the digital divide also means bringing the families along in the process. And we know that our students, particularly Black and Brown students in poverty, have and and Hispanic students in poverty have not had adequate access. And because they haven't had adequate access, their ability to interact is also uh somewhat limited. And so we want to make sure that we're constantly giving the students and their families opportunities to grow their learning around that. Lastly, due to the pending storm, uh, the impending storm, we changed our toy giveaway. We're very fortunate through the Social Conscious Project again this year to have um your low on the agenda, receive the donation pending your approval uh for toys that will be given away at the, excuse me, two lower elementary schools for students in pre-K to third grade. So through the Social Conscious Project, they're donating toys for every student in those in those grade levels and we are looking to a community partner for additional toys to be given away for our upper elementary students in grades four, five and six. Um, due to the storm, we had slated today uh as one of the giveaway days. We've now moved that because we didn't know what this, what it was going to potentially look like today and tomorrow. So we are now moving the toy giveaway to Monday and Tuesday of next week. That completes my report.
Okay, thank you, uh, superintendent. Thank you. And now public participation and according to board policy, zero one six seven. Mr. Hastings?
Again, for public participation, uh, you can post a comment in the comments section. You can hit star three, which will put you in queue to be recognized for your comment. Or an email to publiccomment@asburypark.k12 nj.us. And we'll pause for a moment to see uh if those queue up. Mr. Brannigan, do you see any comments or raised hands?
At this time, no one has raised their hand.
Okay, at this time, we have no emails uh to our public comment email box.
So at this time, I will close public participation according to board policy, zero one six seven. Uh, we do, uh, state monitor does not have a report for.
So we're closing at uh eight oh six.
Sorry. Okay. Our state monitor does not have a report for us this evening. So acceptance submitted, Mr. Hastings.
Okay, could we have a motion on page A three for ten A and B?
Move it.
Moved by Mr. LaRocca, seconded by Ms. Lozinski.
Question?
Okay. Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes, yes.
Ms. ETN?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes, is this, this include uh B?
A and B, yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, yes, uh, but I have to abstain from B three, number ten.
No, no, we're looking at the minutes, uh.
Oh, okay. That's what I thought. All right. Then I'm yes.
You're a yes on ten A and B. Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Give a thumbs up?
Yes.
Well, there you go. Thank you. Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Abstain.
And Sabo's Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for consent agenda? Well, good evening, requesting a consent agenda for items on B one to B five.
Good motion.
Move it.
Question?
It was the second thing with the B.
Breach, breach. Okay, roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
Okay, Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Abstain, B three, A eight, eight, and nine H.
So B three, eight, A, and nine, did you say?
Nine H, yeah, nine H.
Great, thank you. Ms. ETN? Mr. Grillo?
This is the one, yes to everything, B three, ten, I'm abstaining.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Give a thumbs up, K.
She's there. Okay. Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Sabo's Anderson?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Now, whenever you're ready, Mr. Hastings, would you like to ask for consent agenda?
Yes.
So you're taking care of that. Now, after we vote on Mr. Hastings' agenda, please give me a few minutes. Do not ask for a motion to adjourn. Just give me a few minutes. I have something that I would like to address.
Okay, could I have a motion for all items, C one, number one to C three, number eleven?
Move it.
Check it.
Question? Roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. ETN?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Uh, yes, abstain on any payments to JCPenel, New Jersey, uh, Daxel Gas and New Jersey American Water.
Thank you. Ms. Jones? Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes. Did you start it?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
And Ms. Sabo's Anderson?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Okay, so first of all, I would like to wish all of you a wonderful holiday. Make sure that you stay safe and spend time with your families. One of the most important things I believe this holiday season is that is what you will find on the shelves isn't going to satisfy you. What you do with your family, those that you care about, that's what's important. So remember that and um and just love each other. This has been a year that uh we got through with virtual meetings and virtual distant learning. And um, I thank our superintendent for an amazing job. I know it was difficult, but you pulled through and he kept us all together. So just wanted to thank you. And Mr. Hastings, thank you for finding money to keep us going. I appreciate you and I want to, I want to thank all of you board members for um coming to every meeting. Now, we have a new board coming in, in twenty one. But we're losing two members. And we're losing our certified board member, Carol Jones. She has decided to retire. And we all know Carol Jones. She's an amazing woman. And we love her because she has always been an advocate for the children when she was our nurse over at Urban Marshall. And she has served beautifully these last six years. So I just want to thank you for being a major advocate for our children here in Asbury Park School District. Now, is there anything that you would like to say?
Can I add something, Angela?
Yes, Barbara.
I just want to know, uh, I just want to tell everybody, I've known Carol since nineteen eighty five. She was a neighbor of mine for many years and uh she's always been an advocate for the city and our students. And Carol, I'm gonna miss you, but I know where you live.
Um, may I say something? Oh, yes, no, yes, no.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's not my computer. Um, yeah, Carol, um, you lived around the corner from me for many years and uh I remember when you first ran as a write-in candidate and you got a heck of a lot of votes that first that first time around. And then you you won the next time and the next time. We're gonna miss you, but um uh your expertise and your passion for the city will never waver as much as, you know, what we've done. And I want to thank you on behalf of the city and on behalf of the school system. You're an awesome individual and you're an awesome nurse. And they, you know, if you can like give me my next test, because I think they they stuck me the wrong way last time. But um, you know, Carol, awesome. Have a great day. Thank you so much. And have a blessed, stop! Have a blessed holiday and a joyous new year. Thank you.
And of course, Angela, Eric too is uh one term board member and uh
Savannah, Georgia.
What a, what a bright, bright light in the school district. And I hope, I hope Eric that you are successful in whatever you do after this.
Keep going, Eric.
If you would just allow me to finish, of course, I have not forgotten about Eric. All right, now Eric, you came on this board with that big beautiful smile. And you just, you said, hey, I am ready to go to work. And I liked you the moment I met you. And you and I have become friends and I love you. You know, and you know, we we've had, we've gone out, you know, and we've had our good times. You have always been the life of the party, but you have been a force here on this board. And we appreciate you because you are an asset. Now, I'm going to miss you, but I know where you live too. So you can expect to see me when things get better. You know, maybe we could hang out or something, but I've just enjoyed you and I just wanted to thank you for your service. Thank you so very much. Okay?
Thank you.
Eric, I'm gonna miss you too. And we got two for the price of one with you. We got Eric and we got Mr. Van, Georgia. Yeah. Absolutely. Yes, yes.
Can I say a couple of words?
Yes, please. Eric, do you have something that you would like to say?
Um, I'm sorry, I have a few words. I just want to say that um I've had a phenomenal experience getting to know everyone on the board. And you can't get rid of me, obviously. I'm still gonna be around here and there. Um, but uh, I I could, I could go in individually. Um, like Angela, you've always been uh, uh, a lot of you I reach out to personally, but like Angela, you've always been in my corner no matter what, whenever I needed anything. You've always been just fabulous. Uh, Chilla, my sister, you know, you know, you can't get rid of me. I'll be, I'll be tracking you down all the Uh, Connie, of course, you have been um phenomenal. You've you've kept me going um whenever I needed anything um during this pandemic and even all the other times, you've always been there. Um, even when I have had to ask for it. I love you for that. Barbara. You know, we talked and I'm like, you know what, one of the smartest women I know. I gotta give, I give you credit for that. Uh, I love you for that. Uh, Carol, Joe. Uh, I love you for that. Uh, Carol, Joe, I ran with you. You're fabulous people. Um, I'm gonna uh, miss uh, all the fun times. Uh, Christie, I forget about you because we were in Atlantic City. Having a grand time. And I'm like, I finally, I got to know you and you're fabulous. Ken. Also Dominic, you too, great, smart, uh, intelligent people. I'm so glad that you've had been in my corner all the time. Um, uh, Edwin, great running a cert- uh, curriculum and instruction with you. You're a great man. Um, Ivy. Yeah, Ivy, you've kept me on a straight and narrow with, with trying to stay away from me as much as I possibly could. Love you. I love you all. Um, uh, Carol Morris, I've learned a lot from you. You've been, just listening to you sometimes, you just um straightforward, you give it to it when, whenever we need it. Uh, Jeff, businessman, I always reach out to you with questions. I still am going to do that. Uh, and Sasha, you're an amazing woman. Um, and I love everything you've done for us and for this district. And uh, I don't think I'm missing anybody, but um, just want to say I love you all and uh, you can't get rid of me. And uh, Savannah, Georgia, there'll be holiday special coming out next, next week. So I'll let everybody know when it's coming out. So you'll, you can't get rid of Savannah, Georgia either. That's all I got.
I will, I will.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. First of, I want to say, I'm retiring from the Board of Education. I am not dying. I am going to be on your backs. You need me, you call me. And the relationships that I have had with all of you have been so much fun. And sometimes very frustrating when we're dealing with these freaking computers. And I can screw up my email addresses as easy as blowing my nose. And Jeff, you know that. Thank you for, you know, rescuing me periodically when I screw them up and you straighten them out for me. Uh, it has been a real pleasure. It really has. But please, don't hesitate. You need somebody to run errands or do something. You know, if you need help, don't hesitate to call me. Okay? I'm not dying. I am just a little bit. Thank you. It certainly has been a pleasure. Thank you.
The last thing that I want to say to you is that um, I have served for the last five years as your board president. I am not seeking that seat next year. But I do believe that a leader that I have helped to bring all of us together. So when we used to be called a dysfunctional board, we are now a functional board. We are a team that's working together. We may not always agree with one another. Sometimes we may not even speak to each other. But when it comes to the kids, that's when we sit down together and we do what we have to do because I believe that we're all here for the children. So I believe that you will build upon that, the foundation that we all worked so hard together next year. And uh, reorg is January seventh. Am I correct, Mr. Hastings?
Yes.
So he will email you and you will have your time and I will see you all then. Um, Adam, uh, happy Hanukkah to you and to your family.
Thank you.
You've been a blessing to us.
Thank you.
And, and thank you all very much. Merry Christmas! And we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Bye, everyone.
Love you, Carol.
Say well.
Bye, everybody.
Get your camera on Barb. I want to watch Connie.
You want to watch Connie?
She's getting attacked.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's all.
Everybody be back.
Bye, Dr. Howard Morris.
Yes, new year to everyone.
Take care, everyone. Eric, this is everybody.
Connie can use her computer next time.
My partner Connie, it's been a pleasure. Bye.